Welcome all to the first meeting of the Infrastructure Services Committee. Apologies I get from Noam who is going to try and get back from a council commitment to attend or may be here in time and from councillor Claver. Apologies, thank you, seconded. All in favour of please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry, thank you, confirmation of agenda. I move in to chair the confirmation of agenda unless anyone's got any comments. Seconded, Mr Knight, thank you. Any discussion? All in favour of please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry, thank you. Declaration of interest is noted, if anyone has a declaration of interest. Roads stopping 141 Morris Road, Saddle Hill. Lyndon's very kindly given us a road view, picture of 141 Morris Road so we can understand what we're looking at. The staff want to come to the table? And my boy John, I hope you don't need to break from your loads.
I should have.
Do you want to swing us around, Lyndon?
This is this plan up to include half of the house.
Do we own half the house as they own half the house, John?
Yeah, you like half the house too.
Do you want to speak to your report at all, Jim?
It should be pretty straightforward, hopefully. If you've got a copy of the video photograph there, the copy here lots of cover. There should show pretty clearly, I think.
Any questions, councillor Tavish?
Well mine's just a general question, you may disallow it, but I'm curious as to when we do sell a land like this, where the money or the revenue from that land goes? Does it go into a transportation budget or does it go back into general funds for paying off debt?
General funds wise.
Thank you.
We don't do any ratings or anything on it. The client's never been rated but they've had the benefit of it.
It's council-owned land.
Do we ensure that this information is passed on to other departments so that the land does become rated as quickly as possible?
Yes.
Do we ensure that this land, when it comes part of our title, it goes to all our departments including presumably QV in order that we can start rating its value?
Yes, when the transfer happens, there's an automatic process and make sure that the transfer title goes through to the owner's department as well.
Okay. Any other?
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Question?
Sorry, I was just wondering who are the councillors' values for this?
We generally use Chapman.
John Chapman.
Tony Chapman, yeah, I think it's the same value that we always use.
Thank you.
Pardon, any other questions? No, councillor Pete?
Thank you. I just wondered about the history of this, just how a house could be built across a boundary like that.
I guess until relatively recently we had aerial photographs and GIS, the same we do now, and where the boundary is and it's not correct. So we find these things from one time.
Thank you. Any further questions, I've got a move from councillor Bezett, seconded from councillor Staines. Any further discussion? I'll put motion on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry, thank you. You wrote name rotary park close, withdrawal, thank you, from councillor Hall. Hello!
Hello!
How are you?
Good thanks.
Anything to say before we get into discussion or questions, Bruce?
Nice and straightforward, not complicated at all, so hopefully it won't be a problem.
Any discussion or questions, sir? Move, seconded, councillor Pete. Any discussion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry, thank you. Naming of new private way, Dons Creek, Waiteti, again, nothing else to add, Bruce. Any questions? Or move, councillor Lord, seconded councillor Staines. Any discussion, all in favour of please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry, thank you. Time to beat your time, councillor Sinselove. John, welcome back. Any comments to make, John, or Michael?
I was just to follow that, but this is the reason we've been using previous versions of the code practice of traffic management. Under the current version, there's no actual change, what is it? So under the proposed fourth edition, there's no real change to how traffic management's done out on the road, it's more of a paperwork aspect that we're asking to be accepted by the council.
Just understanding the process, if this is agreed to today, it has to go to the council or not? I'm just wondering the process timewise and appreciating this paper change, but the question is how do people who are applying for traffic management plans know about that timing and that way?
We've already been using the new process because that already meets the old process as well.
Yeah, okay.
It's enhancement on the old process.
Okay, so it won't be any paperwork changes.
No.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Councillor Vandevos?
I'm always a wee bit worried when you say that there's a change in the paperwork aspect and the reason I'm worried largely is because there's a very high cost, especially for events, the traffic management, and that cost has been escalating significantly over the last 10 years. The role of volunteers that we used to have almost exclusively in traffic management has sort of been pushed out and I'm wondering will this change in the paperwork aspect you refer to make it even more difficult for some of the less professional, if you like, volunteer groups to be able to carry out this work? I'm worried about the impact on the cost of events because it's a major cost of events to manage traffic.
Firstly, I think it's intended to make the whole process more streamlined, so the intention is to make it easier for the council to be able to delegate those traffic management responsibilities to people outside of the council, which will hopefully speed up the processes to obtain consent as well. So there's likely to be an improvement for people requesting approvals for traffic management. It does not remove the need to have effective traffic management for events, so the people holding events will still need to do the same level of protecting the people within the event and people driving around the event as they currently do.
And the same level of paperwork as well?
Sorry, what?
Well, there's a paperwork cost to run in the traffic management, is that going to change at all?
That's not likely to change. That's a traffic management plan will still need to be developed by someone which is engaged by the event organiser, that's not the council, the council's not involved in developing it.
Councillor Vincent Pope?
Just a question that follows on from councillor Vandevos. I, like many citizens, have been admiring all the amazing roadworks that the city has engaged in, especially out south at the moment in respect of cycleways and related. But I've been interested in what seems to me to be, I guess an issue of overkill, perhaps wrong terms of use in terms of traffic management, but for example when the water pipe renewals were being done in Bayfield Road, lost my rights the other day, even in adjacent streets, more than 100 metres away, there were warning signs, and obviously warning signs is a growing business. Why would we clearly have to have appropriate safety and alerting people to obstacles on their own and so on, would it be fair to comment that it's just possible we might have gone overboard in terms of the proliferation of signage and the related costs that flows with that?
I think as you stated, the issues around safety, the code of practice sets the minimum safety requirements, it's then up to each of the contractors and the traffic management companies as to how much they put in, they have to comply with the minimum requirement which is all the council requires of them. If those contractors working with utilities decide to put more traffic management in to reduce likely risks or safety impacts, that is their prerogative, their expense. So we're only asking for the minimum requirements to be mandated, as to what people do in excess of that is entirely at their discretion.
So it's the cost of the minimum compliance that's factored into your contracts?
No, this is the cost for the minimum compliance for all people carrying out events or works on the roads in the district, so not just the council, for all people. Thank you.
Councillor Wally?
Thank you. With events like at the stadium, do the individual or the people who see the events have to come back up for each event or is it just one plan for a series of games?
Either is possible, it really depends on the nature of the event. If there are a regular type of activity occurring, then our, the code of practice allows for an event management plan, which they can pick a standard plan off the rec. If it's of a nature that's consistent each time, if the event is different or if there are other events occurring in the area, say it may be a normal event but the miners and roadworks going on at the same time, then the whole point of code of practice is that it would then need to be tailored to meet the current conditions. So yes, it is possible to have recurring event plans that you can use each time, which would then save on the cost of developing an individual plan each time.
Looking at smaller events or events like the Mora Marathon, what is the cost to, does it escalate based on the size of the event or?
That's really a matter between the event organiser and the company that they choose to do that work for them, the council's not involved in that work. Our understanding is it typically costs several hundred dollars to develop a traffic management plan and potentially several thousand dollars for signs and cones on the road at least. But as I said, that's really dependent on who they engage, whether they have volunteers or whether they pay for them, whether they have agreements with sponsorship companies that provide that for them. So that's really up to them, that's not something the council's involved in.
Councillor Pete?
Thank you. Out at Broadbail on Good Bell Road, the road is restricted one day or just temporarily for a landslide, and I'll just note there's an unusual feature in terms of the lights controlling that one-way situation and it's, at the red you get an amber, indicating get ready to move, and I just wonder if the new code does allow, will allow that, that kind of operation on traffic lights?
It's non-standard, the signal still means the same, stop if you're able to, which if you're already stopped, you should remain stopped while the orange comes up. Some of those units are purchased from different countries and localities and have to be minimum requirements. Again, as I said, this covers the minimum, we can certainly have a look at whether that's appropriate and whether it's likely to causing confusion. As I said, most people are stopped already and therefore they wouldn't take the orange as meaning the green.
Gee, I do find it entirely appropriate, in fact I'd like to see it in certain problems, multi, you know, like four-legged monsters that we have installed, I'd like to see adopted in some of the, some of the intersections that are very tight and sometimes source of frustration for the police, you know, alert drivers that don't take any notice of the switch from red to green. In some countries in Europe and so on, you just see this constantly and I don't know, it's a question you may not be able to answer.
I think I might take this motor of notification under the chair if that's all right, because I think it's taken this, which is really a paper, it's an adoption of a policy in order to require other things for events, so I'm taking it slightly, taking advantage of it, I understand that, but if I can, if you may, so again, under notification under the chair, that's all right. Any other? Did you?
I'll do mine up.
Thank you.
My old hobby horse.
It sounds like, does it? Any movement? Seconded councillor Terrell, all in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry, thank you. Governance pay type replacement scheme number six page 8.1. Laura Wollam, have you got any comments you'd like to make? Anyone you'd like to speak to? Please, John, please.
Just wondering, you say in the paper Laura, that numbers have dropped off such that approximately 30 properties per year end up at use of the scheme. Is that, is that a change in marketing or a change in, or is it simply, do you think it represents more of a demand drop?
I think, I think it probably does reflect a true demand drop, I mean, to be honest, we don't have a complete clean set of data right the way through, what we have is some very early data from an old report and some more recent data, but bearing in mind that once the properties have their service line replaced, it doesn't need it doing again, it is definitely a closing down of demands, so, I mean, we don't go out of our way to publicise that it's available, but I think genuinely it was a particular point in time that because of early witnesses produced.
So how would people find out about the scheme, like, if they ran up CSA and made complaints about the water quality or whatever, would they be referred to this?
It is available on the web, but the most common way is where we serve somebody with a water confirmation notice, a letter, so we've turned up to their property, there's been a leak, we've got the letter for the letterbox saying it's carefully on your side, and there is a note on that that says if your pipe is galvanized, then you may be eligible and direct on that information. So that's the primary way, otherwise it would be people who've sort of got an inkling that they've sort of heard of something and ring up and ask the question.
This would take effect then on the 1st of July?
28th of February is the day that the contract goes live, so if the council was, wanted to leave it in place, we would have to make some alternative ratings in the short term.
Okay, I think more, any plans, sorry. Any other questions? No, councillor Vandevos?
You said that you don't go out of your way to publicise this. I was gutted when I read this. Because I've done turn houses and I could have had miles of copper out of it, if only I'd placed it.
Please.
Oh, you only did placed it.
We only did, oh, please. It also is not available to landlords, it's only available to owner occupiers and we currently do come out and meddle the amount, so you can't do your hot house, you can only do the service line part.
Only the service line?
Yeah, and the reason for that is that's the part that in the past has been the bit that was causing us to have a repeat, calledouts to go, it's a prime problem. It's also with galf pipes, it's when they're in contact with the ground that they tend to corrode, so your internal plumbing is generally a focus of a problem. So it was that particular bit, having been back through the archives to see some of the history, it was that particular bit was the reason that people wanted the scheme and it was because we were being called out, somebody might do a patch repair and we were then being called back out for a patch repair, so we were incurring costs at the time, so that isn't seen to be such a problem.
Much relieved here that it was only the service line, that makes, it makes much more sense actually. Given that this is not publicised and very few people are picking it up and in the future we're going to be much less people picking it up because nobody has used this type of pipe for a long time now, I think it's quite appropriate just to simply drop it. But I was wondering, are there any other services that we are keeping that perhaps we could make a slightly better job of letting people know about? Like, I heard there was a rumor that there was a tap washer service at one point where they could round the places.
You might have got read some more files, Laura.
Is this really agentless, or?
Yeah, there is, other councils offer a lead replacement scheme, we basically, when we find it, we go straight in and rip it out, so we don't do it under the same mechanism, we simply replace it when we find a service lines, we're just going to do it because of the health risk, whereas this one is more a service issue. Certainly in preparing for the contract, we have done a major review of all of our business processes to line them up with the new process and make them efficient and this one just rocked out and go, right, okay, we don't have a store, we won't have a store, how's that going to work, which raises the question of, do we still want to do it?
So there are any other services that you do that would possibly need publicising, I mean, just don't give them anymore?
The vast majority of them have either never happened or stopped, so I don't think there's any in this particular domain that require better publicity.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? You've got questions, I'll come back to you.
Talking about lead pipes, how many, how many, off the water mains?
Councillor, use your microphone please, sorry.
You were talking about replacing lead pipes. On the water mains around the city, there was a lead bubble for taking away the pressure going to a service. How many of them still in existence around the city?
I wouldn't know without going back and checking, but certainly the vast majority of the lead has come out, but we do occasionally still find some.
As I struck a leak in a road the other day, when they arrived to fix it, the lead had cracked and they were taking them out.
Yeah.
But it must be still a lot of them around the city.
I would have to check, I don't believe we have very much leads in around the city, but I wouldn't want people to take category.
Yeah, it was just, it must be a pressure system involved to say to put the pressure up the line.
Yeah.
But they said all the ones around the city that have got those systems are all lead.
I would need to check that though.
Slightly different issue, I think, than this one, thank you. Councillor Staines, moving. Just, so that's the option ones?
Yeah.
Seconded councillor Lord, any discussion or debate? Do you want to speak to your motion? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry, thank you. And last issue, standard issue is green island landfill charging, Laura, it's you as well?
Yes, yes.
Are you?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments to make on this. One, thank you to councillor Thompson for pointing out a typo. The two lists for the vehicle-based charging, so attachment two and attachment three, when it comes to the vehicle-based charging, are supposed to be the same. On attachment two, the station wagon large loads, the 14, 15, it's changed to 35, it should be 45, which brings it in line with the attachment three version. And the other thing is a verbal update, we are exploring a couple of options which would bring the costs of the proposed waybridge down. One is potential second-hand waybridge from the past, and the other is the size that we, we had originally been given some slight conflicting advice about the size waybridge we would need, and this was based on the larger size, we now believe that we could actually manage with a smaller waybridge than the ones in here, that would bring those costs down, we're still just working through those at the moment, so it may come down to somewhere near the $100,000 mark.
Thank you, questions, councillor Vincent Pope, oh, sorry.
I was going to move on to that.
Okay, can I just ask if there are any questions? Please, councillor Thompson?
The question made me symptomatic of why we're having a debate actually, but the, on page 9.8, the bottom part, the landfill, which would just be, and it would be the same on the other one, but car small load $30,000, station wagon small load $20,000. Can you sort of ask yourself what's been defined here, the size of the load or the size of the car? And so if I bring my same load out in my, in my rev as opposed to my typical gas station wagon, it would be cheaper than if I, it's symptomatic of the.
That's exactly, exactly the problem we're faced with. What we have done in the, for vehicle charging is we've increased the level of fragility because at the moment strictly we only have a full load or a full car, we don't have a half car, so it now does have that option and likewise we have introduced the wall sack, which is a typical way. So what this would mean is that if you went with the attachment three version, if you put a wall sack into a car or put the same wall sack into a UTE, or put the same wall sack into a trailer, you would at least get charged for the wall sack, but certainly if you have a mixed load, loose load, it does still mean that exactly the same load, if you could fit it into half a car and you chose to put it into a UTE, you would still have that problem and that is because we're still having to work on some rough averaging of how that compares into an overall weight.
Councillor McPheelish?
Just looking at 9.5, you explain the outlying landfills.
Yeah.
And you talk about the fact that the current regime is based solely on a rough estimate of load weight.
Yeah.
And then you go on to say that a visual assessment of volume rather than weight would be the new approach. I'm just struggling to match that up with statements that you have here.
Yep, and you don't know. I've actually discussed that in the last couple of days with the people at Delta in terms of how that works. At the outlying landfills, actually up until we simply went to a simple, single set of charging, they didn't do the outlying landfills by cubic metre when they got the large loads, which to be honest is rare, it's rare that they do get the large loads. Apparently, once you have compressed waste, even polystyrene, by the time you squirt it enough, you get almost, with relatively consistent, consistently one tonne per cubic metre. And I was a little surprised actually that polystyrene was good, that much, apparently it does. And so what they were doing until a couple of years ago at the outlying landfills is they would look at a cubic metre of waste and they would charge per cubic metre roughly, you know, they do a rough visual assessment. So actually this would be reintroducing the charges based on that. Now, at the moment, all of our charges at the outlying landfills for large levers are based on weight, so what they do is go, it's about a metre cubed, which is about a tonne, which is about a whatever. But the, I did ask the question, expecting that same question because I had the same thought myself, of why does that mean we can't do it when coming to the boot with small vehicles? And the issue with small vehicles is often they're closed backs, they've got tinted windows, so whereas a commercial vehicle is hugely open and there's not that many, if you think about the typical domestic car and the boot load plus the other things they're not planning to drop off because they just have to carry them in the boot and all of those sorts of things, the, when you try to apply a visual assessment of about a metre cubed to a domestic vehicle, it is quite problematic. Commercial vehicles also do tend to have done their own pre-compression, whereas domestic cars will just possibly destroy to the back of the window, so.
So if commercial vehicles have done their own pre-compression at the outlining sides and we're charging, what we're proposing to charging them by metre cubed and they're already increased, how does that compute into appropriate charging?
The, 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 no, thank you, lots of discussion about this in the last few days. The per metre cubed weight, but weight that we're working on, we're working on an equivalence for weight that does assume that big commercial people, they have generally done a fair amount of compression. So, because whenever we are working with volume, we are always making a conversion of that into weight to, because that's how we run all our operating costs, that's how we're charging for ETS. So if we're, if we're talking volume, there's always a mental calculation through back that converts volume to weight to cost.
Okay, councillor Staines?
Laura, I'm sort of coming to the conclusion that a waybridge for Green Island is the way to go, but I have a concern about, and it probably is affecting loads now, we have a strategy to try and minimise waste in the landfill and we don't provide any service that pracks someone's conscience when they turn up. And so my, my concern is that once you go to, I'm not looking out the window, and you charge by weight, that we get an increase in number of people who just accept the charge by weight and tip it all into fill. Is there any, within our waste minimisation drive, is there any budget or any opportunity to, for periods of time, provide someone who is auditing the load with, regardless of the waybridge, but all of the load and advising people how they should dispose of that load? waybridge, but ordering the load, and advising people how they should dispose of that load? They were doing that in Omuru, and I thought it was, they were quite specific with that decision.
Yep.
Go, take that over there, take that over there.
Yep. So there is, the way that the waybridge would be set up would mean that you wouldn't need to go across the waybridge to dispose of any of your things to the recover store, the cardboard, all of those things. So there would be a natural incentive to get rid of all of that first, to reduce your weight. And the way that we're proposing to charge, albeit it's all by tonne, if you're carrying vegetation, solely vegetation, you would pay a lower cost per tonne than you would do if you're disposing of general waste. So that should by itself help the same thing. One of the things that I've seen for myself in the past few days, which I thought was very good practice, that we could probably follow without huge amount of investment, is some of the information that Christchurch's councillors have got on their website, which actually goes so far as to advise you what order to load your car in. So it actually says, put this, put your general waste at the back, then your green waste, and then your recycling, so that when you get to the landfill, go here first, then do this. And what they actually suggest is they use a similar sort of system, drop off your recycling first free, come over the waybridge for your green waste, drop your green waste, come back out again, go back in again to drop your general waste. Because then you only get charged the green waste fee for the green waste, and rather than paying the higher mixed loads charge. So there are some, with a waybridge in place, there are some things we can do to prepare people for how, to get mutual gain, both the waste minimisation, which by virtue of the way that we're then charging, should also be that their charges are as low as they can be, within the charging structure, around that sort of education message, and making some of that a bit more familiar to people.
I think if we can, we can incorporate some of that into the useful waybridge, then it sort of eases my conscience about just, I've got it on board, I'll just take, dump it all, I'll just pay and dump it all at the landfill, because at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is to divert that waste, or at least put it in the appropriate disposal.
The charging differential should certainly discourage people from using, having to pay a full waste charge when they could be doing something better and therefore cheaper.
Thank you.
I'm just doing questions, I hope people don't mind, in order that I receive them, which brings it councillor Thompson's getting a second bite of the cherry now.
Forty five dollars. Just on the existing charging mechanisms, the distinction between the single axle and double axle trailer, if, if the single axle trailer, would it increase the load to over capacity if the single axle trailers went over the waybridge now?
So is, what you, so if anybody turned up with a trailer, they'd go over the waybridge. Without checking the numbers, I couldn't be sure, I would suspect not, I would suspect that there probably is an option where if we just said trailers, any trailer, use the waybridge, but I would need to verify that to be sure.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins?
Thanks, madam chair. The sample audit included in this report, can you tell us when that was taken and how that sample size relates to other such audits that are applied by BEGA?
That's actually the, I think it's a accumulation of two different audits, the most recent of which would have been pushing twelve months ago, certainly from talking to the booth operators, from talking to the contractors, as a result of changing the charging, if you were to do the same thing now, the average weight, the average load has shot up, because people are ramming their cars to the guns before they go to the landfill, so. But certainly one of the things that's identified is the, the size of the dataset we're using to set the charging is probably not as large as it should be.
So we currently don't have any audit data based on, one assumes, a better enforcement of the current pricing?
What we, what we have since December time, when the charging was, was done, we are keeping, and we can pull it at any stage, daily totals of the total waste that was disposed of and the number of vehicles, but this actually takes you, that only gives you the average, but it, what it doesn't give you is the spread of how small the small loads are and how big the big loads are. So when we do the periodically, and it's probably isn't as frequent as it should be, we do set it, do actually do individual weigh in, weigh outs of a number of vehicles.
Is there anything urgent about making this happen in the thirteen, fourteen year? What are the implications of putting it off to fourteen, fifteen, for example, which would give us perhaps better data along those lines, and given that we're all aware of how heated a discussion this is in our community, perhaps the opportunity to put it through the annual plan process?
Yep. Certainly that's one of the options that's available to you. What it would mean is that you would need to make a decision on what the charging would be at the start of the fourteen, fifteen year, because if you're consulting on the waybridge and then decide to install it, it won't be in place for the start of that financial year. So we would need to change charging waybridge partway through, but certainly that is an option that's available.
What's, is there a ballpark time for how long it would take to install?
Six to eight weeks.
Okay. And the, you talk about encouraging green waste, do you have an idea of how much green waste that people take under the auspices of green waste that actually ends up in the landfill?
So of the actual green waste, as opposed to a mixed load, so obviously we've got people going with the mixed weight load who are being charged for, under the current regime, green waste, of the actual things that people would associate with green waste, approximately fifty percent of it can be composted. There's a significant proportion, including all grass clippings that can be. And certainly I know from my own practices, it's grass clippings that we take. But the reasons for that, and it is consistent with other landfills as well, the reasons for that is grass clippings in particular have high degrees of herbicide, which don't break down in composting, so you use the compost on your prize roses and they die. Flats and things like that, which don't compost very well, some of the more pinacious weeds don't even in industrial composting break down, people don't want them in plant farms. So certainly, and using myself as an example, we hope to compost whatever we can, and so even the stuff we can't compost, we take. Most of that would not be suitable for our composting operations at Green Island.
So the rate, so eighty dollars per tonne for green waste, does that a reflection of the fact that there are costs associated with it ending up in the landfill? Because that doesn't seem to incentivise people to use it as much as.
There is, there are two parts to it. Part is the fact that some of it, fifty percent roughly, ends up in landfill anyway. And the other part is that the composting operation itself, that has its own operating costs. So there's the movements to and from the composting, there's the processes of turning it, and a variety of other processes that are simply involved in producing compost. And as I understand it, the revenue that we gain, gain from selling compost, doesn't actually cover the cost of the composting operation, let alone the cost of disposing the rest of it in the landfill.
The idea of education has come up before, do you think that those messages about what can and can't be composted through our green waste are communicated as well as they could be?
I think we have plentiful room for improvement.
And would, I mean, what difference would that make if we tried to educate people to use our green waste service, disposal service more efficiently?
I think it would help people's understanding of why we charge, but I'm not sure that it would actually make a huge amount of difference to what we could compost and what we can't, because people will still have the old clippings and things that they need to take.
And it's cheaper than taking it to general waste?
Yes, yeah, we still probably prefer them to do that. And the way that we dispose of it on site at the moment, whilst it's put into three broad bays, one of those three bays does go direct to landfill. The others, the contractors pick over and take out what they count for composting, and then take the remainder. But certainly what we've seen through the recent months is people not understanding what happens to green waste, and therefore seeing what they perceive to be conflicting messages. And so we could certainly do better from that point of view, and we can do more through helping people, as has been suggested, to separate and make best advantage of the facilities that we've got.
Councillor Pete?
Page nine four, just a quick theory, that might be a time limit. Halfway there, a paragraph stating it is proposed, and it ends towards the end with a rubbish bag of up to sixty litres, which would exclude the official, official sixty five litre bag. Did you mean that?
I think it probably is meant to say sixty five litres. It's certainly, it's meant to be rubbish bags up to typical rubbish bag size, but what it, it doesn't have to be an official rubbish bag, it can be any bag of any material of that size. So if somebody's got a third class sack.
But most people would be thinking sixty five litres is, the bigger of two bags would be, so I think that's probably what means.
Thank you. Mayor?
Laura, and the reason that we are considering a waybridge is because of perceived anomalies by, by, by the users of the landfill. And just going down to the sample audit, I note that of the different categories of vehicle, the only ones that appear to be perceptibly, numerically better off, are cars with rubbish, which is exactly double would be better off than worse off. And the rest are all, is not a challenge really, the same number, better off than worse off. So my question relates to the proportion of vehicles going into the landfill that are just cars. Because that would, and I don't know if you can answer that, but that would, that would give us some kind of steer on just how many people are agreed. And who, and who could justifiably believe they might be better off under a new system? Because if proportionally there's fewer cars, then we could go to the trouble of putting it in a landfill and actually, no, it'd be, it'd be better off financially.
Firstly, I think there are other, other reasons over than just the grievances that may drive you to want to go down that route. I know, and it's certainly somewhere in the report, there's reference to what percentage of the revenue is, and we did do what percentage of vehicles come in. I don't think I have without going back, what number, what proportion of those are cars. But I think certainly from the complaints we've seen, it isn't all just coming from cars. What, what you have got is, so take for example, the trailer van used with the vegetation mix, whilst there may be twelve people better off and twelve people worse off, those people who under this option would be charged six dollars and are currently charged thirty, the perception that, hang on, I've only got a very small amount of rubbish and I'm charging this huge charge, that, that, the gap in the spread, but by the same token, you could have fifty percent of the trailer van used drivers in the future now going, hang on a minute, my charge is just on that.
Well, this is my, to some extent, my point, that
Absolutely.
The idea that they're being overcharged is to some extent a perception, because, and I acknowledge, as you said, that this is a relatively limited audit, but it would appear that the same number of people would be better off as would be worse off, or pretty much. And so it comes down to perception.
Yes.
And we may, I guess the conclusion I'm drawing is we may spend a hundred thousand dollars to correct people's perceptions, rather than the reality.
And I think the other potential is that another group of users become agreed.
That too.
Yeah. But I think, I think beyond that though, the, whilst it is the recent issues that have probably brought this to light, the potential for a waybridge has been looked at and discussed for quite some time. Because what it, it does do is it gives us a more direct promotion of waste minimisation, it's more direct user pace, and it also does make our revenue collection more reliable. Where, at exactly what level it turns out to be reliable too, I think there's still some debate that would, would be flushed out. But I think it will be far, it would be a far more reliable way of ensuring that the revenue, that the fit between the revenue and the charging is consistent. Thank you.
Councillor Lord?
I have a couple of questions, Laura. This question, the first question I ask is, has the system, or did the system historically work well? And then is this main issue about how our contract is managed, or is it the quality of our contract not enough? I mean, I'm just, I'm wondering if we need to manage our contract, was our contract not robust? I mean, it just would seem to me a lot of money to spend for something that should really be not that clearly difficult.
So I would think the first question in terms of did the existing system work? The existing system has for a long time given us a problem that we were not meeting the revenues that we should have been meeting, because there was a mismatch between the charges as they were being implied, and the charges that were with the way our charging was, was set up. So that, that left us a gap, because we were only ever discounting. We were never saying to the other ones, oh, you're heavy, so we're going to charge you extra. So that, so from a point of view of did it work from meeting our revenues, no. Did the public perceive it as fair? They appear to have done, certainly when we changed it, they've certainly commented to the fact that it seemed to be more fair before, but it wasn't working for the point of actually meeting criteria targets.
Could that be something that could have been cured by just lifting the price, by saying whatever the target requirement was, maybe ten or fifteen percent, and then the discounting still applied? I mean, if you're discounting fifteen percent of a hire, or you're discounting rate of a higher initial price, is that surely not?
What we've seen in fact, because over a number of years, we have been coming back saying we're not meeting revenue, we need to put the car fee up, and so on and so forth. What we've actually seen is, for the initial period after that decision's been made, things moved up a bit, and then because the discounting does provide for a fairly hefty degree of freedom, the discounting was just offsetting it. So if you would have rocked up and paid eight dollars for that amount of rubbish, the council then made a decision, the car charge has gone up from twenty dollars to twenty five dollars, you rock up with that same, same charge, you'd never pay checked up, and you're not just going to pay eight. So because there wasn't sufficient guidance, now, it is fair to say that by adding some clearer guidance around the increments, that says, well, okay, now if you bring it as a wall sack, this is how you should charge, that does help with that. But the small load, large load still means that the operator is going to have to make a decision whether or not that's enough to be a small load, or is actually enough to be a large load. Now, given that those guys are on the front line of, you know, responses from, from people, there is a human tendency, I think, that they, if it's on the margins, they're always off the no charge, because then they get the more positive experience back from the customer, and they see a happy customer. So, so it's inherently got that risk to it. And as much as anything, I think it does expose the operators themselves to real perceived accusations of unfair treatment. We have heard around this table about, it depends on who turned up to the booth, and which booth operator it was, as to whether I got charged eight dollars or ten dollars. So there are some of those. I think there are some things that can improve in the contractual relationship, more about understanding each other's issues and communicating better about what's working and what's not working, and sharing ideas about how to improve that. But I don't, I think there is a more fundamental problem around having a system that is so open to interpretation.
Councillor McKeelish?
Just a couple of follow up questions. The first is, I assume, given that we're looking at a second hand waybridge, you're reasonably movable, like in the event that we needed to move, close the landfill in ten years' time and needed to move it, that would be something that could be achieved reasonably easily?
A big proportion of the cost is actually the setup, and the IT and those sorts of things that go around it. Anything can be moved. It's, it's, it's doable, assuming that the waybridge is suitable, and that's still to be, still to be determined. It, it could be done, it would potentially save us some money, but they're certainly not affordable items. You know, they do take some major calibration and setup, even though you need physically move the truck.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Zid?
No, I think if I ask what I was going to, I would take your question time, so I'll just leave it to her.
He's leaning, he's leaning. Councillor Pete?
Thank you. There are various references to generating profit or surplus, and I think we all understand we need to move under recovery, you know, the budget figures anyway. But given sort of the present flow of the solid waste out at Green Island, do you have any, have any idea of what that surplus or profit might amount to? Because that might be something we'll comment on in discussion.
The figures around the revenues and so on and so forth were included in the annual plan papers, I don't have them in front of me. But the, the pure profit from Green Island in the current year is around about one hundred. in the current year is around about one half million, but a portion of that is back into capital requirements and loans. And then some of that surplus then effectively funds other solid waste activities, without the documents to be able to come up with the exact.
My, I think the net position is about four hundred thousand, four fifty thousand, add all that, once you take the profit from Green Island and fund the other landfills and other activities. So. Oh, we should sort of emphasize that the change, you might decide on doesn't change the revenue, so if we're based on the same revenue coming through the annual plan, it's a different way of charging for that. It's not a revenue increase as a result of this proposal.
Clearly, that four fifty was if we hit revenue targets. If we under-hit targets, we'd be living more like three hundred.
Councilor Hawkins?
Thanks, Madam Chair. What is the life cycle of a waybridge from a renewals point?
It's just a few periods.
It depends if it gets recycled, reused, or...
Lifespan?
I'm afraid that's a question I haven't asked yet.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just wondered if we were to go down the second-hand option, whether any savings made now would result in us having to replace or renew that at an earlier date?
We're still at a very early stage. First thing we've got to establish is whether or not the waybridge that they have available is compatible with what we've got. There's a whole load of issues around that that have to resolve first. So it was really just a flag that we were exploring some others.
And will that be substantially cheaper than installing a new?
I'm not sure on that one. The other option might be that we could actually reduce the size. So I think you're still looking at somewhere that is over a hundred thousand, but hopefully closer to a hundred than one fifty, because of the other things that need to be done to actually get it set up.
An apology if I've forgotten this from the budget discussions, but the deferrals that would fund this from the thirteen, fourteen budget, or whenever it has been, what is being deferred?
So the current, in the current budget, is actually the vegetation on the final cap. So what we would do is, obviously, the timing of that depends on just how quickly some things get filled up, when certain bits are ready, and so on and so forth. But we could defer that into next year. What that effectively means is that then nudges something a little bit further into the following year, and so on and so forth. So it just slows some of the other things down. It's not something we would, it is still something we would have to do.
Yeah. I was suggesting it doesn't need doing immediately. Do you know when?
I mean, we could, if this wasn't approved, then we would continue with the current plan, which would be getting on with that in the current financial year. It's just that it's something that, because of the nature of what it is, we can choose to push that off a little bit, and then find the low priority things and nudge forward.
I know, just thinking, a response to Councilor Hawkins' question, I think it's a very good point. We will need to look at the whole life cost of those waybridges, and we'll make the best decision. It's not a point of buying a second hand, or if we then need to refurbish it within a year, for example. So we will look at that, that part, to have an impact on the budgets anyway, if you decide to go after it.
Question, that's excellent.
Just in relation to that comment you just made about compatibility of the existing waybridge with a new one, a putative new one, you're really, you're not confident, or you are confident that the IT around these systems is compatible with the current waybridge at some point?
Those who understand waybridge far better than I do are just having some conversations around, there's a number of different things relating to firstly, waste minimization, about the degree of difference between your in-waybridge and your out-waybridge, and the relative calibrations on them. So there's also differences around what the degree that they're calibrated to versus the size of the weights that you're trying to measure. So if you've got two calibrated quite differently, you can't use one as the in and the other as the out. So, but we just have, because of white hany and so on, we haven't just managed to catch up with the right people to understand whether or not what they've got is used to allow us. Likewise, our existing one works with certain software. If theirs would require us to replace it with software to use it together, then that would obviously potentially wipe out any costs. So we're just working through those to see whether it's even worth looking at for the life of the cost of those.
Any other questions? I've just got a couple of my own. Is there a potential, if people don't like the idea of a waybridge, either it's less convenient, and/or they don't believe it's fair, is there a possibility that this may just push people to a competitor landfill system, where they don't have waybridges? The other system, I think we heard last week, doesn't have...
The transport station doesn't have a waybridge?
Yeah.
I would imagine it would depend on the size of the load. If you've got a small load, you're going to want to come in over a waybridge. If you've got a very large load, and somewhere else will charge you for that load at a per-vehicle load, and we will be charging by weight, arguably, somebody might make that choice. Quite difficult to predict.
Yeah, no, then the other thing is, the others might come with a waybridge. I just want to make sure, there is no guarantee that even if we invest a hundred and fifty thousand, though, it will actually resolve the financial issue that we've got. It may make the system fairer or equitable by weight, but it doesn't necessarily resolve...
What it would do, but it may not do it immediately, what it would do is it would give us far better quality data, and a far more reliable system to match between whatever the revenue target is that we're trying to achieve, and the loads that are coming through. Because of the data we're working with at the moment, we know currently we work on that recovery rate being a hundred and thirty dollars a tonne. What we could find is that the true recovery rate that we need to get, once we get all the data, is higher or lower than that, which could go either way, in terms of needing to come back and say in future years, actually, the system is working, but the charges are too low, if that's the revenue you want. It could also obviously work the other way around, and we could be saying that now we've got the clarity, and all the vehicles being weighed, and that really good match, we don't need a hundred and thirty dollars a tonne, because that was as a result of some of the discounting that had gone on in the past. So there is some uncertainty in the early days. But ultimately, I think it will lead to a much closer match between the revenue targets. It's always based on a forecast of how many vehicles will come, how many tons will come. If they stop coming, that always is a problem. But it does take some of the uncertainty out of the way, certainly.
Right, thanks. I have to put a point, you know, I should on this side. Councilor Wiley asked for a side visit before he had this discussion, for various reasons, it hasn't been able to happen. It will happen still for annual plan hearing, so, not whether, I mean, it is still available, and Mr Avery's told me that he will be arranging it at some stage for us. In the meantime, he encourages everyone to go with their full trailer loads, or even unfilled trailer loads, and use the services to resolve this issue, or at least be part of it.
Well, I do note, I mean, she'll probably have another three hours of this agenda time, people should be free in their diary if they want to go.
Okay, yes, sure, we can do it this afternoon. I'm going out that way shortly. Now, Councilor Zed, you, sorry, Councilor Benson Pope, you intimated you wish to push an option?
Well, I'd like to test the meeting, I'll move a slightly amended version of recommendation one, if you can.
Okay, well, I'm just going to put up, we've had to slightly amend option one anyway, can we just put that up then? Because it didn't quite articulate what we should have done, because this is part of the item.
But the other thing around rewording is, because the three recommendations are mutually exclusive, they're either one, two, or three, we just reworded the first bit. So if you go for resolution one, two, or three, we can slot them in, but it's the present, the change is fine, you can see.
No, this is our amended version. Yeah, so do you mind working on that one, Councilor Benson Pope? So change that.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just that, I'd just like to qualify with reference to the discussion about the compatibility of the technology with whatever's being proposed with the existing waybridge. And so I'd move that, really subject to confirmation of compatibility with the existing waybridge, approve the installation of a second waybridge in the thirteen, fourteen year. Well, it's just that that issue's been raised, and we haven't heard that before. This issue was brought to us on the basis of, and two-way bridges in and out is more rational, and it seems to me that it is. But if there's a concern that this might not be the whole story yet, in terms of the implications of the different calibrations and so on.
I think I may not have been as clear as I can be. The issue only relates to whether or not we buy the second-hand waybridge. Certainly, this proposal, which is based on a hundred and fifty thousand for a new one, is sound. What we're just looking at is whether there's...
I'll go with it.
So you're happy with the slight amendments, we've had to make sure. Do we have a second for that motion? Councilor Staines? Now, would you like to talk to your motion?
Could I just ask for clarification? There's an extra word in there from the number one, which is could, it could include. What is, what's the...
Sorry, is it include?
Could include.
No, could include.
Oh, and council include, this council stopped. If you can't read my writing, I'd like to walk away. It was just because council reprove and council include, sorry.
Well, just speaking to that, much better read the motion. I think we had the discussion during the annual plan hearing, we've had a lot of it get already. I think weight and waybridges are much more rational and easily, more easily understood, system for our consumers, customers, residents, than the sort of proxy system that we've been using, that certainly apparently doesn't work anyway. Because when it was applied the way it was supposed to, people weren't able about it. So I think this would be a good way to move. I think the advantage is a degree of rationality that doesn't exist at the moment, and certainly a lot less pressure on the operators. And I think it would be widely welcome, from the feedback I've had around the tracks about this. And the capacity to consult on the charges is pretty obvious. And I think that will be a further debate around what's appropriate for different things that we will have in it, and it will be a further debate.
Any other discussion? Councilor Zed?
Yeah, I support the resolution, and I support some of the comments that Councilor Benson Pope made. I think the, a lot of the questions we've just had were around the comparisons of the previous fees, and I think that's totally irrelevant, because as Councilor Benson Pope said, there was dissension with regards to the previous fees anyway. So we really should be concentrating on what is fair for our, for the rate payers to pay. And I think a waybridge is the best way to determine that. I think also with this introduction, if we do go ahead with this, we've got to have clearer guidelines around how we've arrived at those fees, because there may be some adjustments that we have to make at a later date. But I don't think there should be comparison with the old fees, because as I say, the system wasn't working anyway. We're looking at something new, this is a new regime, and I think it's the only way to go, because people are not going to argue with a waybridge, which, what they're doing at the moment is debating the issues with our operators. And I think it eliminates that or mitigates that. So I think this is a good proposal.
Lee, Councilor Andrews?
I agree with Councilor Benson Pope and Councilor Zed, that a waybridge is a fairer way, or at least it's fair to have it as an option for people. But I do question why we need another waybridge when we've already got one there. As I see it, as a relatively frequent tip user, all that would be required is a rerouting for those people wanting to use the weighing option over the existing waybridge. The existing waybridge is accurate enough, it has certainly the capacity to do what's used in commercial things as well. I mean, I'm not wanting to disappoint any waybridge salesperson, but we already have a waybridge there. It's got the booth beside it. There might be some slight rearrangement required of the booth, or a traffic rearrangement to use it. I don't want to spend a hundred and fifty thousand to put one waybridge beside another waybridge that's already there.
Thank you, Councilor Staines?
I support the resolution. I think it brings with it a fairness that we need to do. The community feels we are unfair in assessing the loads, this takes that away. I still have some concerns that diversion may not be as good. And that would then, I like the idea that you can reweigh your trailer after taking off the green waste. But if that's going to work as an encouragement for mitigation, then we're going to need to have some way of ensuring that that is quick and easy to do. And so that links a little bit to Councilor Benson's. I think there'll be times when that way, one waybridge would handle it all. But if we do want to encourage people to reweigh, so they only pay the correct fee, that that is a quick and simple process, rather than having to go out of length, or get at the back of a queue, and wait to come through again, in which case, they're very likely just to dump the whole lot in that zone.
If I may make a comment, the costings in here do not allow at the moment for our system to allow the out and back in again, because of that exact issue of ticket turning. We don't have a safe way on the way out to turn to come straight back in again. So whilst we've seen it as a potentially good idea, we don't yet have the mechanisms to make that work for us.
I'm assuming that that will be something that, if the waybridge system is put in, we would look to solve, so that it could be encouraged.
Thank you. Councilor Tavish?
Thank you. Whilst I have been, some of my concerns about waybridges have been dispaged, and I think that my view now is that I think we probably do need to go down this route. My preference would be to consult on this through the annual plan. I don't think there's any hurry in getting this in place. We're going to have to check, or the fee structure that's currently there at the moment, is currently there, and if we have to do it for an additional six or eight weeks after first of July, I don't think that that's necessarily a problem. What I think would be a problem is if we go out and do this, and for whatever reason, the public aren't happy with it, and they feel that they haven't had the opportunity to have their say. I think that would be really unfortunate, given the very strong feelings that people have over issues pertaining to things like landfill fees. So my preference would be for a, to go out and consult on this proposal, particularly considering that we are consulting on proposals worth much less than one hundred and twenty, or thirty thousand dollars throughout annual plan process. So that would be my preference. So I won't be supporting this motion. It's not because I don't think that a waybridge is a good idea, but it's because I think we should be consulting on it, rather than doing it in the twenty, thirteen, fourteen year. And in addition to that, I, even in the event that this passes, would like to signal a consequential motion, which just picks up on some of the issues that Councilor Staines has raised, and some of the acknowledgement that Laura has made around the potential to perhaps improve some of our education and support initiatives around waste minimization at the landfill, and just ask that staff report back around potential additional customer support and education initiatives that would enhance waste minimization activities in relation to the Green Island landfill. So I will put that as a consequential...
Are you full shadowing another motion, though, is on option two, if this one fails?
Should this one fail, I would move option two with this additional one. In the event that this passes, I would still like the opportunity to move this additional one. Thank you.
Can you just give that going, oh, it may just be easier for you now. Councilor Thompson?
I've been sitting on the fence a little bit on this one, and to be honest, I'm not sure that I will terribly distress to, I don't get my way on this one. But I think I still lean towards not spending a hundred thousand dollars, and looking to get some more training of staff, and clear specification, or as pure as you can get. And I think that there are ways of doing it. And I would prefer to do that. I accept that at the end of the day, we might do that and find that we don't solve the problem, but I don't, I think I would prefer to try that first. And even though this is proposed to be money that's coming out of deferment of other spending, at the end of the day, it's still a hundred thousand dollars of additional capital spend, whether it's coming out of just pushing something through forward. Push comes to shove somewhere. And I just don't think that it's 100% necessary. I think that there are some tweaking, further tweaking that could be done. I think you could decide just to put trailers full stop over, and that's where a lot of the bigger loads come. I also picked up on the mayor's comments earlier, that at the moment, the... I also picked up on the mayor's comments earlier that at the moment we kind of know who's annoyed at us and what we don't know is who's going to be annoyed at us afterwards and, you know, do we need two lots? So my preference would be to see the status quo or an enhanced status quo continue. I sense that the numbers around the table probably aren't in my favour, but I'll give it the best part of my point of view.
Can I ask for confirmation before we go to the mayor? You mentioned $100,000. It's $150,000 at the moment is the approximate figure.
It's $150,000 with the hope of the little reward.
Yeah, I just want clarification. Thank you. Mayor?
For principle, I support the waybridge idea, not because I believe it will necessarily make it fairer in the main, but for two reasons really. One is that it gives us more surety around meeting our budgets. It's more transparent in terms of fairness. And I think that contrary to councillor Staines' concerns around people dumping recyclable stuff, for instance, when they could take it over. I actually think that it would encourage them to recycle because it takes the weight off the trailer. So if we've got two waybridges, that's in the event that we've got two waybridges and they're not held up. But I think that it would actually encourage, if I knew that I was paying for every bit of weight on my trailer before I, you know, when I got weighed, I'd take a whole lot of extra people and dump them off before I got there and then put them in the car before I got reweighed again. So there's an incentive actually to get rid of unwanted stuff. So however, if I would, I'm inclined to agree with councillor Tavish that the consultation should be the other way around. I would prefer to consult on the installation of the waybridge and I don't think it's necessary to consult on the charges because already the charges are a proxy for weight anyway. So they're not going to effectively change. So whilst I can support this in the understanding, I could support this in the understanding that there's a consequential, consequential motion that were to fail to ask for consultation on the waybridge, I'll probably vote against this. Not because I'm opposed to a waybridge, but because I think I'd rather consult on the waybridge and just say it's going to cost you pretty much the same as what it does now, but is this the way you want to do it?
Councillor Pete?
Thank you. I want to thank representative for her report because up till now I was a bit... I've two minds whether weight or volume were more importantly comes to solid waste. But I think it's very personal, there's many views on solid waste management and there are producers of it. And that's why we're wrestling with it and that's why we're taking a bit of time over this and so we should. I have to think though that the mechanism for charging, that is the waybridge idea, the weight idea, is going to offer us more certainty and more fairness and more consistency. There's no doubt about that, I guess. And I take the mayor's point, but I still think the fees are probably more contentious than the idea of a second waybridge to improve efficiency and fairness and consistency. So I think that we should, we should obviously be consulting on the fees around, over the waybridge, the second waybridge. So it's one or the other that I think I'll probably go for as my...
My understanding, just for clarity on that point, is that, and you may want to ask the general manager about that, but the consultation, foreshadowed motion would be that you consult on the waybridge and the charges, not either or. That option two actually requires two parts of the...
As on the order.
As on the...
Yep.
Any other discussion? I don't think for debate. I haven't discussed with you. I personally would prefer the full foreshadowed version because I think it's, there's a very different story here. At the moment, this is about charges, but I think we will be better informed about how the community... I think it's a really good one to engage the community on putting a submission on the annual plan first.
Can I ask a question here? In the light of the consequential motion, I don't understand if we approve this one, which installs it in the 13 and 14 year, if we can then have a consequential motion to consolidate it in the annual plan for the 14 and 15 year.
No, no, it's a foreshadowed motion and a consequential motion. So the foreshadowed...
This one's lost.
Did I say consequential? I thought I said foreshadowed. Apologise.
Chief, could you perhaps explain the two so that we understand what our choices are? Because things have been subtle and I'm not absolutely sure that I understand councillor Tavish's foreshadowed motion.
The foreshadowed motion, my understanding is option two on the order paper, the foreshadowed one. The consequential motion to either of those is that some resourcing be put into both education and better understanding?
Just that staff report back around potential additional customer support and education initiatives that would enhance waste minimisation in relation to the Green Island landfill.
Just an attempt to help. The difference between recommendation one and two is when the consultation... First one has no consultation about the waybridge going in. Both of them consult about the fees that would apply to a waybridge. And both in that schedule two, the fees that would apply to the other landfills in effect are the fees that would apply if you didn't have a waybridge. So that's the difference between one and two.
Okay. All fair on it. Now put the motion all in favour. Please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Could I show of hands please? Those four, hands up. One, two, three, four, five. Those against? One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion lost. Councillor Tavish, you'd like to put your motion, foreshadowed motion, which is the option two? Second of councillor Hawkins? Any debate or questions? Sorry, or debate? Do you want to talk to your... I apologise. I don't think I gave you a right reply.
No, you didn't. Too late now.
I think we've been fairly well thrashed out. Sorry. Would you like to talk to your motion? Or do you think we've had some bits of hope like that?
Maybe you can hear my right reply.
I can ask to have told me I got it in the wrong place where I wanted to.
Councillor, I just want to be aware without just adding my second one and...
And putting them as...
Putting them together.
I'm just asking them to do that, to put that up there. Now that motion possibly means, this again will be a recommendation to council to consult?
This one is, the second bit is just, I think, more of a, something that we can probably authorise as a committee. That's our report back on something.
I just have the motion here. Sorry, councillor Thompson, do you mind if we have the motion put in second place? Sorry. That's all okay? Councillor Tavish, do you want to talk to, or do you want to ask a question first? A question, do you mind?
It's not really councillor McKiss, it's probably one of these two I speak. The, under the original motion, were it to have been passed, we were funding, proposing to fund that out of a current year budget. And under this motion, we would be proposing to fund it out of what?
I would suspect we would probably request a carry forward of that money into the next financial year.
Yeah, I think given that we were going to fund it out of this year's budget, we would need to be able to fund that out of either this year's budget, carry forward or next year's budget, so there wouldn't be an extra funding requirement. But if you pass that, I think by the time we get to the annual plan deliberation, once you've had the submissions, we should be able to write an updated report around, you know, the work that we've done around the practicalities, make sure we've got the calibration issues sorted out and the funding sources at that time, assuming that you decide to proceed or provide information at that point.
Do you want to speak to your motion councillor Tavish?
Just a query of telling you you don't want an additional part of this motion which talks about a carry forward?
No, no, we can deal with that out of distant general operational stuff. And I think Laura's under clear understanding that there isn't, we're not requesting another $100,000, $50,000 to fund this. We need to fund that out of the existing budget, as we said we'd be able to, so.
So do you want to speak to it?
I'm happy to write a reply if I give you one.
Yeah. Councillor Staines?
I'm quite happy to support this resolution with the other one defeated. But I have a concern and I hope that it will be addressed. And that is that if after consultation we decide to put in a waybridge, that in fact we can start that within a week. I don't want to see a situation where we enter the new financial year with a charging system that operates for two months and then we change it. It would be much nicer to know that if we decided that the contractor was already decided, subject to council deciding to proceed as a result of the annual plan consultation, so that it could be done quickly and could give us some surety around our budgets in the financial year that we're moving into, rather than starting it in one system and having that uncertain.
Just thinking of looking at attachment two, if we make some editorial changes to that because I think it would need to make it clear that the proposed waybridge charges would come in when a waybridge is installed and then when the waybridge isn't there, that it's the other charges. So just, I think through some editing around that, make sure that that's clear.
Any other people want to speak to that motion?
Do you have a question?
I still oppose it for another reason that I think that it's continuing to put off. We should be trying to put these other steps in place and see if we actually can deal with the problem in a less expensive way. And all of this, all this does is really defer the decision. We'll get a mix of views, some of which will be relevant, some of which won't. And we'll just have the debate again in how many months' time. So I'm not sure that it actually really resolves. I think it just delays the debate.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do I, I'm going to put that motion, sorry, write a reply apparently?
No, I think it would be unfair.
Thank you for fixing my problems councillor McKiss. Oh no, put the motion all in favour. Please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Councillor, Mr Avery, I'm giving him an opportunity to say aye or no.
Sorry. Yeah, no, just turning down the opportunity of a further consequential motion. You should be very grateful.
Do you want to vote?
No, I'm all opposed.
Okay, okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you very much Laura, for your report. Welcome councillor Herbert. We've just finished the last item of the day, except for notification after the chair. I was going to go to councillor Pete first, but I think councillor Staines may have the same issue.
I don't think one does a follow-up.
Oh, councillor Pete?
Sorry.
Well, I think you, I interpreted that if you want to talk about traffic lights having amber at red lights, you may raise it now as something you'd like to be investigated.
Well, it's just that we have relatively short phases in our traffic light system and that very often if someone's not alert enough to start a flow with a green light at the moment, then you can get, you know, it's an irate frustrated driving. So the idea of introducing an amber following a red just to give a heads up on green seems to work well overseas. I think there could be problems with anticipation of that by the counter traffic at intersections. But at some intersections, it could actually improve things. And I'm thinking of the three five heated ones, monsters sometimes called, I think that Don Hill called them that. And it just could improve the flows, that's all.
So I'll raise it up now. That goes to councillor Staines. I think she's got some very strong feelings on this issue.
I, it follows on. In many places around the world, at off-peak hours, traffic lights default to flashing orange, i.e. it becomes the right-hand rule. So traffic flow. I don't drive around late at night as much, but I get it in the air from taxi drivers and I've been in taxis driven through red lights. At late at night, so we're talking about the hours where traffic flows are very light and lights just, you sit there stopped, waiting, waiting, waiting. There's not a single vehicle goes through the lights. So if there isn't any legal reason why we can't move in that direction, I would like to ask the chair if an investigation could be done into the viability of introducing a flashing orange light for intersections that at night have very little traffic flow.
Now, thank you. I'll take both those items. I have a feeling that someone around this table asked me also that maybe we'll take the opportunity to formalise it. I took it, street lighting at night and certain times getting it turned off. Is that someone down here?
I think that we were advised that that was going to be hit and...
Yeah.
That it was being locked in as part of the...
On demand. Yeah.
Yeah, mostly we can't do that with current technology, but certainly if we look at the replacement of the street lighting system, we've talked about it at various times, that's certainly the technology which is available and I'd imagine we'd be reporting on it as part of that. I don't know the timing of that, but that's what we would be giving to.
I know of an astronomer down in Portobello who would very much like it done as soon as possible down in Manchester. As a trial plot, but that's fine. Thank you. Thank you very much for your attendance and input. And put it away. Thank you very much.